All right, this is a meeting of the Rutland zoning board of appeals. Present are Tamika Murphy, secretary, Chris Senical, vice chair, Paul Corain, Jacob Morris, and Rick Sarette. First item on the agenda. Application for variance Gerald McLean seeking relief from, it says setback requirement. What it is, is a front setback requirement to construct a farmer's porch on a single family dwelling, 24 Orchard Hill Drive. All right, so I've got the application in front of me. And there is a narrative here as to how the proposal satisfies the standard. I would have to ask what the hardship is. So, is it Mr. Lang?
Yes.
All right. Could you give me some idea of what the hardship is?
Well, basically, I wanted to put, you know, a six-foot-wide farmer's porch on the house. And you can see that we're, we've got the setback on the left side towards the middle of it. And because the house was built on a slight angle to the road, we, on the right corner, we only have 26.5 feet, but we need 30 feet.
Okay, am I correct when I say that you're seeking a front setback, right?
Yes.
That's right on Orchard Hill, okay.
Yes.
All right, so I think what I'm hearing is that the hardship is the shape of the lot?
Yes.
All right, and that is one of the standards. Just to read briefly from the applicable part, it talks about soil conditions, shape or topography of the land. So, the gist of it is whether granting the variance, you know, will be detrimental to the public. Good, okay. And as I can see from the plot plan here, it does look like it's in a regularly shaped lot. And as you mentioned, the house is slanted more towards one side of the lot than the other. So, okay, so is there anything else that you'd like us to consider at this point? Any other detail you want to add at this point?
No, I guess that's about, it's about it, I guess, you know, just because of the odd shape of the lot, you know? If it was square to the road, we would have been fine with what we were doing. We're only coming out six feet. We're not looking to come out, you know, eight feet or 10 feet wide. We're keeping it minimal.
Okay, all right.
So we're not impacting as much into that zone.
Okay, good, I appreciate that input. Okay, so at this time, you know, since we're doing this by Zoom, I always give this caveat. I ask that we just speak one at a time through me if we can do that, just so we don't step over each other. It's hard enough doing remote. So, Chris, would you like to be heard, our comments on this application?
The only comment I got is just, the stairs coming off the front of the porch. And I was hoping the building inspector might be here, but I'll just kind of, you know, go back to Mr. Lang. Is that part, do you need a variance for that? Is that considered part of the structure?
No, well, I talked with the building inspector, he said the stairs do not count.
Not count, so just the main porch frame size?
Yes.
All right, yeah, no, then, that's really my own concern, because I just want to make sure, you know, if a variance is granted, the right footage is granted for you.
Okay.
Put a parachute out the damn thing or something like that, so. All right, that's all.
Okay, all right, good, good, Chris, you all, all right.
That's all, yeah.
Okay, great. Paul? Dicey?
Okay, yeah, I just want to go, you know, on record that I am listed as an abutter to this property, so I will recuse myself from a comment on the vote, but I will speak as a abutter when allowed to do so.
Okay, thank you very much, Paul. Jake?
Yes, thank you. I don't have any questions.
Okay, great. All right, so the three voting members will be myself, Chris, and Jake. Is there anyone here who would like to be heard, any interested person, abutter, who would like to be heard at this time on this application?
All right, I would, Rick, it's Paul.
Sure, Paul, go right ahead.
As a neighbor, I have no opposition to this, this project. I think it'd be, make the house look nicer and add to the value in the neighborhood.
Great, thank you very much. All right, is there anyone else who would like to be heard at this time?
Could I just say something briefly?
Sure, Mr., am I pronouncing your name right, McLean?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, please, go right ahead.
Presently, the front steps I have now stick out about eight feet, and the horrible shrubbery that I have has gotten completely out of hand. This is going to make the house and the neighborhood such an improvement over what I have now. And I just, I just think it's a step up, you know?
Yeah, no, I think the board appreciates hearing that, you know. You know, we all want our property to look as good as it can. And, you know, Paul is a neighbor, so he's, he's in favor of it, so I think that's a good idea. Okay, is there anything else, Mr. McLean?
No, that's it.
Okay, so do we, do we need to hear? I don't think we really need to hear from anybody. I don't believe we, Tamika, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe that we got any memos from any town boards or the town administration. Am I correct in that?
The board of health sent a memo, but just to say that they had no issue with it. Nothing from the planning board, and we didn't receive any feedback from the abutters.
Okay, great, all right. For some reason, I missed that memo, but I appreciate you bringing me up to speed on it. All right, great. So, at this time, can I, do I hear a motion to close the public input part of the hearing and go to discussion amongst the board?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so I, I think this is one of the ones where I really don't think there's going to be much dissent from anybody on the board. It seems reasonable, the lot is shaped irregularly, the house, what, place on the center of the lot. We've heard from the owner and from Paul, who's an abutter tonight, that this will enhance the appearance of the neighborhood. So, I certainly have no opposition to it. What do you, what do you think, Chris?
Yeah, no, I think it meets the hardship, and I think it's certainly not a detriment to the neighborhood in any way. Other homes in this neighborhood have variances of this such already. It's, you know, in the neighborhoods, and the town has benefited from it. So, I think this is, I have no issue with this, and see no problem with it.
Thank you very much. Jake?
I have no problem with it. I'm looking at a picture of the house now, it's a very nice house, and I think it would be a nice upgrade to have a nice porch like that.
Okay, all right, so why don't we talk about, if we're going to vote in favor of this, why don't we talk about exactly what we would be voting on? So, by my calculations, it's, just from the documentation provided, they would need a three-and-a-half-foot variance to make the 30 feet. Would you suggest that, just to make it even, we, if we're inclined to vote favorably, that we would make this four feet? Does that make sense, or should we go with three and a half?
Four feet makes sense to me.
Yeah, four feet's fine, I don't, that doesn't make a difference in any of this four. Yep, it was the builder, a little bit of, you know, you never know.
Yeah, I think.
Wiggle room, yep.
Okay.
Wiggle room.
All right, so we would do, all right, four feet. All right, so do we, do I have a motion to put this to a vote?
I'll make a motion to put it to a vote.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so we'll put this to a vote. So, we're going to vote to grant the variance. It would be a four-feet front setback variance. All right, so all in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? All right, so this passes unanimously. Jake, would you be willing to write the decision on this?
Sure.
Tamika?
Do it.
You want Tamika to do it? Or you?
Oh, 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 well, well.
Or have it die hard, huh?
Tamika is kind enough to draft the decision. Why, Tamika, why don't you, why don't you send it to Jake?
Sure.
Let him make any revisions, and then, and then the rest of us can look at it.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, Jake, he'll be like the project master here.
Great, no problem.
Okay. Tamika, I forgot that you were, yeah, you were doing that, you were drafting these decisions.
That's no problem, it's a new thing, we're getting used to it.
Yeah, okay. All right, great, so.
Just let me know about the appeal period, too.
Okay, once this is, we have 14 days to get this thing filed, the decision filed. It's a favorable decision with the town clerk, and then there is a statutory 20-day appeal period. Once, once that 20 days goes by, then no one has any further right to appeal. And you can then record this favorable decision in the registry of deeds, and then the building inspector will issue you a permit. Did I leave anything out, Chris? I might have.
Jerry, when the appeal period is up, I'll send you an email to let you know that you can come pick it up at town hall, and then you can take it to record at the registry.
Okay, I'm not sure if I do that, or Steve, my contractor, Steve, would do that?
Yeah, either one of you can figure out how to do that. I can email both of you if you'd like, when it's ready to be picked up. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, I don't know if that's something he does often, if not, I don't mind doing it, but, you know, either way.
Okay, I'll let you guys know when it's ready. After, after the appeal period.
Great.
Okay, good. All right, so anybody that appeared at this hearing, you know, for this application, it's a public meeting, you're welcome to stay. The board is going to move on to other business, so you feel, please feel free to log off as you see fit. You can, you're welcome to stay if you'd like, but you, but we're done with this portion of the hearing.
All right, next.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for your submissions and all your information.
Thank you very much.
Excellent.
All right, very good, all right.
Good luck, guys.
Have a nice night.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on, I, we have, we cannot start the hearing until 6:30, so we will conduct what other business the board has, and then promptly at 6:30, we will, we will take up the 29 Berry Paxton Road matter. Okay, so Tamika, we, we have the minutes from the May 5 meeting?
Correct.
I looked at it, I, nothing really stuck out that I would have any comments or any issue with. I think you did a pretty comprehensive job, as you always do. So, I'm ready, I'm ready to approve that. I'd like to hear from the other board members, though.
As usual, it looks good.
Yeah, it looks good to me, I have no issues.
Okay, good. All right, so do we, we have a motion to accept the minutes from the May 5 meeting?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, all right, so these are accepted. Tamika, do we, do we have any other business we have to consider?
Just a couple of highlight points, I guess, is that hopefully the next time we'll be able to meet in person. And in fact, as of June 15th, we will have to meet in person again, because the emergency mandate is going to be lifted. With that being said, we're still working on what spaces the boards are going to use, because as of right now, the basement at town hall is still set up with the vaccine refrigerators. So, I'll definitely keep you guys in the loop. And the only other thing I was going to mention is I do have a pending variance application. I'm just waiting for the applicant to get me a couple more things, so there will be another application coming down the road, probably in the next few days. I'll be reaching back out.
Okay, and that's pretty helpful.
Yep, it's a variance application to build an in-law apartment, or in addition onto their home, but we currently do not have that in any of our bylaws, so it would basically be a use variance in this case. So she's collecting all the information, and she's going to get that over to me, and then I'll, I'll reach back out to you to make sure we've got everything.
Okay, great. So that'll be new business coming down the pike soon.
Yep, and other than that, I think that was pretty much it.
Okay, great, all right, so we have.
To that, to that one, you may want, we had one meeting not too long, remember when they wanted to put an in-law apartment in, turning it into essentially a multifamily? And then the building instruct, the building inspector at the time advised the people to, just don't put a, just have an open door, don't put a doorway or something, and they didn't need to get a variance to put that in, to put a second kitchen in, essentially is what they were doing.
The, the building inspector has denied this application, and he was actually the one that instructed her to apply for a variance application. So I'm not sure if he sees things differently than the previous building inspector, but she, she does have that denial in hand.
Yeah, we see Corinne at Puliafico at the post office, it was her case that I'm referring to. This was a very similar situation.
I know that the town, Dave George and the planning board are currently working with the CMRPC to create an accessory bylaw that they're hoping to maybe bring to fall town meeting, because they do recognize that, you know, there's an interest and a need for that in town. But unfortunately, this applicant, you know, doesn't want to have to wait to see if that's going to happen, so she was advised to file the variance from the building inspector.
Right, if somebody's talking to the building inspector, if he pulls his records on that one, though, there may be something in there that rings a bell that she doesn't have to apply for a variance for this or something.
I can reach out to Lynn Miller and ask her, because she, yeah, because Lynn would know, where David's knew her, he probably wouldn't know, but if there was something, Lynn might be able to find it. So I can shoot her an email.
Yeah, that would be helpful, because we don't have access to that. It wasn't a, this ended up pulling the zoning, it was, actually ended up being denied, and then it was changed, they, the building inspector found some loophole at the time, I think it might have been Pete Wugley or whatever, that, no, I shouldn't use the word loophole, but found the code that allowed it to happen, a way for it to happen legally.
Paul, do you remember about how many years ago it would have been?
Oh, when was that, guys? Three, four years ago? Does anybody remember?
Do you remember the address, or like whereabouts it was in town?
Yeah, it was Corinne Puliafico, it was right off of, off of Maple Ave.
Okay, okay. Paul, reach out to Lynn and see, and see if she can find anything before we, like you said, start the process.
Corinne was the, worked at the post office for years and years and years. She should remember her.
Okay, so, Paul, you all set with that issue?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll have a recess, a recess, brief recess until 6:30, and we'll come up on at 6:30.
Okay, so we're, we're back from our recess. So the first, well, the item that's next on the agenda is a continuance of the three applications that were heard at the April 14th meeting. So let me just see who's here, so. Paul. Alright, so the, the three voting members will be myself, Chris, and Bob. So at the, the last hearing, we heard, we heard from a number of interested persons. We heard extensively from the attorney for the applicant who I see is here. Attorney Para.
Good evening.
Hi. And since the hearing, we have received a number of other documents. Which I just need to. My hands off. Okay, so, Tamika, you may have to help me out. But we have a letter here from Attorney Para, it's dated May 17th, 2021.
Sure, would you like me to screen share, Rick? Would that be easier?
Um.
Or do you want me to re-engage it to you?
No, don't, don't, I don't want you to screen share the letter.
Okay.
Would be kind enough to, to just read the list, other than the letter which I just referenced. Read the, the list of what was submitted. There was, there was a petition and a couple of letters.
Oh, yes, um, so, yep, we received two letters from them. Um, we also received revised site plans as of April 28th. Um, hold on one second. Um, I believe that's, uh, we also received a third letter, um, from Pinn Casa. Um, so there were three letters total that have been received, and the revised site plans since the last meeting.
Okay. Okay, so. At, at this time. I, I would like to hear from any interested person who's present, who was not heard at the April 14th meeting. If, if you were already heard at the April 14th meeting, we, we can have a discussion after as to whether we need more, more testimony from you. So is there anyone here present who did not speak at the April 14th meeting? Uh, I see some individuals whose names I don't recognize. If you'd like to be heard, please state your name and your address. Okay. Okay, at, at this time, Attorney Para, would you like to be heard further, maybe amplify on the letter that you sent? The, the letter is somewhat technical. I, I don't know how fruitful it would be to, to share the screen or for me to actually read a three-page letter. It's more, it's more akin to a legal memorandum than, than it is a letter. So, and Tamika, am I correct in understanding that you posted that letter already online?
Yes, that is correct.
Alright, so any, anybody who wants to see the letter will have access to it. Okay, so Attorney Para, would you like to be heard at this time further?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. So, a- at the last hearing, um, you know, in, in our perception as the applicants, there were, um, you know, two principal issues that had come to the fore in the discussion and testimony that you heard at the last meeting. And the, the first issue is the issue that I tried to address in my, in my letter to you. And that is really the question of, I mean, I don't think there's any disagreement or, um, you know, controversy over the question of whether this was a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Um, the question seemed to be whether the non-conforming structure had been abandoned because of a condemnation order that was apparently issued in 2017. So the purpose of my letter was to address that. And, um, I think just to try to summarize the letter is you have to distinguish between use and structure. So use is a residential use in the district is not non-conforming. It's permitted as a matter of right under the zoning bylaw. The non-conformity here is the, um, is the dimensional non-conformity of frontage and area. And that relates to the structure. So the structure was non-conforming, and the question is, was that non-conforming status abandoned in 2017 or 2020, if you want to call it abandoned, with the raising or demolition of the building? And, um, we cited two cases for you, Dial-Away case and the Cirallucci case, which discuss abandonment in relation to non-conforming structures. And in both cases, um, you know, run the time period from when the building was, as described in one case raised, or in the other case removed. And so those cases are, are not dealing specifically with the two-year period that's permitted or talked about in your bylaw, um, or in 48A Section 6. But they are, they are addressing the, the concept of when abandonment, you know, can begin with respect to a structure. So it's our position, and I believe it's supported by the cases and the law that we've provided to you, that, um, the use can't be abandoned in the sense of non-conforming, because it isn't non-conforming. And the structure, um, you know, abandonment can only begin to run when the structure is raised. And practically, I mean, from a common sense point of view, I don't think anybody would say that if instead of demolishing the building, you know, you'd come in to do a renovation, however impractical that might be, you wouldn't say that the structure, you know, had been abandoned. So that was the, the primary purpose of my letter was to address this issue that came up. And if you accept that position, then from a legal perspective, it follows that this is a pre-existing non-conforming structure. It's a single, under the definition of your bylaw, um, it's a single-family dwelling and under 48A Section 6, you have a right to reconstruct so long as you're not increasing, uh, any, you know, non-conformity, which we're not. So the proposed, um, residence will conform to all of the requirements of the bylaw, except as to area and frontage, which are the pre-existing.
Okay.
Non-conformities.
I'm sorry.
So that was the first issue. Do you want me to address the other issues or?
If you would like, sure.
So the other issue that was discussed at some length and brought up by interested parties um, was the issue of the safety of the connection of the driveway to the public way. Um, and Mr. Tetrel has provided you with the results of his investigations on that subject. And, um, I'd like to give him an opportunity to describe what he did and how the driveway complies.
Okay, let me just break in for a second here. Tamika.
Yes.
We, we received that engineering analysis. It was relatively brief.
Mm-hmm.
Um, has that been posted as well?
Yes, it has.
Okay, alright, so, alright, so you would, you would like, um, you, you, your individuals are listed under James?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Would you like to be heard at this time?
Sure, and I'll just be very brief. After, Mr. Chairman, after the last hearing uh, and the discussion of, uh, uh, safety conditions, went out to the site, um, actually with Mr. Vanacasa, and we went to the location of the site, proposed site driveway. And we looked, um, both to the east and to the west to see what site distance was available. And from the point where the driveway would come out to Barry Paxton Road, you can see a car in front of number 26, and that was a distance of 496 feet away. Um, that's looking to the east, uh, towards the, the Paxton line. Looking to the west, the site distance was even better, it was 1,230 feet. And for context, um, ASHTO prescribed stopping site distance for a, uh, uh, forty, uh, trying to get the distance, the, uh, speed right, excuse me, for a 45 mile per hour road, which is what this is posted as, and is requiring 360 feet stopping site distance. And again, we saw 496, which is actually just about the requirement for 55 miles per hour. Um, so I would say I'm not in any way contesting anybody's, um, history or recollection or, or, but the, by the standard measure of adequacy of a proposed driveway entrance, which is alignment and available site distance, this actually does meet the, the standard. Now, and, like, again, I'm not, we're not contesting anyone's, you know, I saw this happen, I saw that happen. Uh, drivers aren't paying attention, et cetera. But by the primary standard of, of adequacy of a proposed entrance, this site is, is satisfactory, this, this proposed entrance.
Okay, alright, thank you very much. Um, at this time, David George, the town planner is present. Um, uh, Mr. George, would you like to be heard at this time?
Uh, sure, Rick, thank you. Um, let me just try to focus the comments here. So regarding the standard by which a special permit can be granted for a non-conforming structure, that comes under Section 13-2 of the zoning bylaw. So I'm just gonna read it if you don't mind. I'll try to be brief here. As described in MGL Chapter 48, Section 6, "Pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses may be extended, altered, or changed only by special permit from the Board of Appeals. Any such change, extension, or alteration shall require a finding by said Board that is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use or structure. For the purposes of this bylaw, any extension, alteration, or change shall not apply to work that does not increase the amount of living usable space in the structure or does not increase the footprint or size of the structure." So if the Board was to go down this road, you'd make the finding that it's not any more detrimental to the neighborhood, and then grant the special permit, assuming that you find that the findings are factors sufficient in the application, which is another question. So that's the first one. Regarding abandonment or discontinuance. Our position is that the relevant date is not when it's actually taken down, but when an official action, such as occurred by the building commissioner and the health agent in 2017, where they officially deemed the structure to be condemned and officially posted as such, is the relevant date. So therefore, under the abandonment and discontinuance provisions, if work commenced within two years, that would be coverable under the special permit, in this case because the size of the structure is larger here than the prior structure. However, no work commenced within two years, so therefore, we believe that the structure has lost its vested rights, is not eligible for a special permit to reconstruct a non-conforming structure.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Is that, is that it, Dave?
I mean, for now, um, those were the two major issues that, that the attorney brought up, so I'll leave it at that for now. If you want to come back to whether or not a variance can be granted and there's sufficient information to do that, I'd be glad to talk to that at that time. And then the other one is whether or not it's valid for an, an appeal of the building commissioner's decision. That's a separate one. Maybe I'll hold those until those come up. Thank you.
Okay, sure. Okay, so at, at this time, do, do any other board members have any comments or questions for the applicant?
Um, I, I do, Rick.
Please, go ahead, Paul.
Okay, uh, who demolished the previous, um, structure? The current owners or the, uh, previous?
The previous owners. It was demolished when I purchased the property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, Chris or, um. Or Jake?
I don't have any questions. I'll, I would, I would make a few comments when, when you're ready for me.
Why don't you, why don't you go ahead, Jake?
Um, so just to kind of simplify things, and I think we're on the right track anyway. We're, um, we shouldn't really, we're, we're not talking about use at all. I know it's come up. Um, Attorney Para brought it up, but, so use really is out and shouldn't really be discussed. Um, it's all about the structure itself. I know that, um, based on reading Attorney Para's letter, um, and he's obviously a very good attorney and put together a, a very comprehensive argument. But the case, uh, that I, the Dial-Away case involves a time period beginning when uh, the structure was raised, but doesn't say that that is how 48A Section 6 is to be interpreted. It's just, it's fact-specific to that particular case. So it's kind of open-ended. There is a case that I read that, that was referenced, it's the Town of Orange versus Shea. And it, and essentially says that abandonment requires the, the occurrence of two factors, which I think we've discussed, but I think it's important. The intent to abandon is one, and two, voluntary conduct, whether affirmative or negative, which carries the implication of abandonment. Um, so I, I think that that leaves, uh, the question a little more open-ended, and it doesn't essentially say that abandonment begins when, when the property is raised. So it, it's been my position since the first hearing, and it's, it's still my position that, uh, the property was abandoned, um, uh, when, when the town shut it down. When it was condemned, so that's, I, nothing has, has changed my position, and there we go.
Alright, thanks a lot, Jake. Any other board members like to be heard at this time?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to make some comments on some stuff that I did.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, uh, I did read the, um, the finding there at Charus, and a couple of things. The reason I asked who's the previous, uh, who demolished the house, being the previous owner. The case that Attorney Para referenced really states, uh, says for to retain its non-conforming nature, even if we don't look at the date, take that two years out of it, that the house, as it was demolished by the previous owner, and then it also speaks to the sale price of the lot. That lot was sold well below building, buildable market prices in the town. So it was not sold as a buildable lot. So that, that case actually affirms my opinion that, that we cannot give them relief on the zoning, the setbacks and all that on this. The case actually confirmed, reconfirms that. And the fact that they're changing the footprint and moving the house also lends that this is not, um, using an existing property, and it just takes that whole two-year abandonment out. They tore the hu- the house was torn down and removed from the property by the previous owner. The lot was sold at a lower, a low market value, and the new plan is not even, um, in line with what was previous there. It's a much larger house, different footprint. So any non-conformity that was, would have, could have possibly been grandfathered is null and void at this point in time.
Thanks, thanks a lot, Paul. Alright, so, so, um, David, Dave George. Am I correct in understanding that your, your prior comments were addressed towards the application for special permit?
Would, would you repeat that, please? It's a bit noisy here.
Am, am I correct in understanding that, that your prior comments were directed specifically toward the application for special permit?
Yes, yeah, the comments I made a few minutes ago?
Yeah.
Uh, yes. I only was trying to make a distinction, because as I understand it, there's three applications.
Right, okay, so at, at this time. Right, okay, so at this time, we have two, well, we have an application for variance, and we have an appeal from the decision of a building inspector. Would you like to cover both of those, you could pick the order you think is more appropriate?
Okay, thank you. So the appeal of the building commissioner's decision, usually that takes to the form of an applicant applies for a building permit, they get a denial, they get some pathway for how they should proceed, if the pathway is variances, they can proceed that way, if the pathway is, if they, if the applicant wants to disregard that and say, we just don't agree with the building commissioner's determination and his reasons for not creating the building permit, then we can just appeal that on its surface. However, we believe this application is not valid at this time because the applicant at no time applied for a building permit, therefore, there was no denial of the building permit. The only thing that is out there is correspondence from the building commissioner where he provides information regarding putting a home residence on the property, and indicates that that would require a zoning board approval. So that letter is clearly advisory, is not a permit denial, therefore, the applicant has not pursued all remedies available to it prior to the appeal. So we think that application doesn't have merit at this time because it's premature.
Okay, thank you, all right. And then lastly, we have the application for variance.
Other variances, I mean, the variance really has been ignored throughout both of these hearings, whether that's deliberate, I don't know, whether the applicant thinks it's not relevant to anything, I'm not sure, but the applicant is arguing in the alternate, and they're arguing this thing at least three different ways. They do have an application for variance, so presumably, they must think that a variance would be some proper form of zoning relief if everything else fails, I don't know. The only thing I'm going to say about the variance is, the original recommendation we made, based upon the information we had, was that the applicant sought to rebuild a single-family dwelling in place of an existing single-family dwelling that had been modified, knocked down. So our advice was, because we believe that you don't have any vested rights because of the abandonment and discontinuous issue, the only thing left would be variances from the area in frontage requirements, so I believe that's why you have one of these applications. I mean, I'm going to let the board determine whether or not it wants to grant the variances. I will just note, as the planning board noted, that the application doesn't really get into the required findings of fact to support the grant of a variance. Other than that, I'm not going to really comment on whether or not that should be granted or not, I think this is a different element than the special permit or the appeal of the building commissioner's decision.
Okay, thank you very much, David.
You're welcome.
Okay, all right. So at this time, if no, no new interested individuals want to be heard, are there individuals that were present, or that spoke at the April 14 hearing and are present tonight, do you want to be heard again? Would you like to be heard again?
I would like to be heard again.
Okay, now, we heard from you extensively, and we really don't want to do a rehash, we got your correspondence, we got your petition, we've heard you extensively, so is there anything you want to add to what you've already submitted to us?
Yeah, the only thing I want to add is to comment on the letter submitted by the lawyer, on the part where he said the demolition of the previous struc-
Right, I forgot that, could you just state your name and address again?
Christina and Dennis Suhaqui, 23, Barry Paxton Road, direct abutters on two sides of that property.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So yes, I just want to comment on one statement, it said, "In fact, the demolition of the previous structure was undertaken for the purpose of making way for the proposed reconstruction." So I find this interesting, because they didn't own the land, the land wasn't for sale when it was demolished, so I'm not quite sure I understand all of that. I will argue that when they bought this land, it was, there was no house, so I'm not sure how they can reconstruct a house that doesn't exist, for another point. And, yeah, that whole timing is very odd, and again, we made an offer on January 5th, they countered at full price, we recounted the next day, same price, the very next day they rejected our offer, and then sold it for half that price. So I do question the whole timing of this, and again, I would appeal that this should be denied.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me for one second. Okay, so would the applicant like to be heard further at this time?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'd like to address town planner's comments. So, first, and I understand this is not going to go anywhere with you, but I just want to make clear that, to the extent this is a reconstruction of a single-family residence, it does not require a special permit under 40A Section 6 if it retains its status as a nonconforming structure. More importantly, is, the reason that we filed an application for variance is because that was what the building inspector, I won't say instructed, but suggested be done in order to bring the matter in front of the Board of Appeals. I agree, this is not a variance or a case for a variance in the traditional sense of, you know, Section 14, you know, hardship due to topography, shape, those kinds of things. This is not that case, and, but it is a case for variance in a different sense, which is that the proposed use is an exempt use under 40A Section 3. It's sort of an unusual situation where you have a confluence of an exempt use in single-family definition. And so, we believe that there is a separate basis for granting or permitting this project to go forward, notwithstanding that the lot is, has less area in frontage than is currently required in the bylaw. So I'd like to make a suggestion to the board, because I don't want to, I mean, we understand where the board is going with respect to the applications in front of it, is rather than be, you know, forced into the position of taking an appeal, you know, from the board's decision, is, we would like to request that you continue this matter, you know, generally, and we'll bring it forward, including, you know, all plans that are necessary for the building inspector to determine whether he would permit this matter to go forward as an exempt use under 40A Section 3, and that would avoid unnecessary expense both for the town, or potentially avoid unnecessary expense for both the town and the applicant. So I'm not suggesting that the building inspector would in any way necessarily agree with us, but there is no process under the zoning bylaw for, in this district, there is incidentally for one of the other districts, but there is no process in this district for, you know, reviewing an exempt use and applying what are effectively site plan standards to that use. So I'd like to suggest that to the board as an avenue here, and ultimately, the board is going to retain its authority to make a decision, because there's these pending proceedings in front of the board, and the building inspector will have had an opportunity to review.
All right, thank you, Attorney Para. Okay, well, the board will take up your suggestion shortly on the issue of continuance. All right, at this, at this time, are there any other interested parties who haven't spoken, would they, would you like to be heard at this time? Okay, so at this time, I would like to entertain a motion to close off the public portion of this hearing and go to board discussion.
I'll make that motion.
Rick, I don't mean to interrupt, but I don't think we can do that if you're possibly going to be continuing it.
All right, before, before we take, before we consider whether to close the public portion, let's have a brief discussion amongst the board as to continuing, I'll say, I don't think that would be productive at this time, that's my personal opinion. Chris, what do you think?
Well, in general, overall, the site plan, and just to, just to talk about some of the site plan things and the traffic, the applicant's kind of, you know, the, other than the, I mean, most of that looks pretty good to me as far as what they're trying to do, you know, as far as putting that structure on the property. The only hangup, I mean, obviously, is the zoning issue and whether this property, you know, is, if they missed a window to construct this, and that's really on the legal side, so, you know, you and Jacob are the lawyers, and I'm listening to Attorney Para as well, and, you know, Dave George as well, so I'm just trying to get the gist of the legal lingo here, and I just looked for you guys for, you know, some-
Thanks a lot. Bob, would you like to be heard on that issue of continuance?
I'm sure, Rick, so, I mean, I got a lot of better understanding after listening to the town planner, Dave George, I mean, he definitely helped me with that, so, I mean, I think we have a timing issue on this, right? I think we're outside that window, so I don't, I mean, it looks like a great organization and we're going to put a nice program here, but I just, based on what I'm hearing and what I'm reading, it just sounds like they missed the opportunity to build this prop, build the house on this property.
Okay, so that's, that's just the, that's, yeah, the issue on the special permit, okay. All right, so, all right, so you're not inclined to grant the applicant a variance, I mean, a continuance, so they can, they can file more information with, for their variance with-
Well, I'm just not sure we're going to, any more information is going to be able to give us what they need, it just sounds like there's a timing issue here, and it didn't, it wasn't met.
Okay, all right.
May I just briefly address some-
I'm sorry, who, who, yeah, yes, Attorney Para, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you very much, so, the town planner indicated his view that the appeal portion of the applications was premature because no building permit application had been filed, and so, it's not that I agree with that, but again, I'm trying to avoid unnecessary expense for the parties, and so if the applicant were permitted to withdraw the appeal portion without prejudice, then I think we could work with that and avoid having to file an appeal, you know, with a court on the matter. So again, I'm just, you know, ultimately, you know, the town retains the control, and, you know, the application for building permit may ultimately be denied, you know, it's possible at that point that we would appeal, alternatively, the town may choose to grant the building permit, and we would get past this issue. So that's my alternate request, to be permitted to withdraw the appeal without prejudice.
When you, when you say withdraw the appeal, specifically the appeal of the decision of a building inspector?
Yes.
Okay. Well, you know, that, if you withdraw that particular, then you can come back as you see fit.
Correct.
Well, I don't think anybody on the board is going to fight you on that, so if you'd like to withdraw, you know, one leg of the triangle, so to speak, the, the appeal of the decision of the building inspector, yeah, I mean, we'll accept, we'll-
We'll accept for tomorrow.
And then we'll, I still want to hear from the other members of the board as to whether they think a continuance is going to be valid or advisable. So, so it's, just let me understand, Attorney, Paul, just one second, Attorney Para, just so I'm clear, you're suggesting that you would be willing to withdraw the appeal of the decision of the building inspector without prejudice, and I, I'm not aware of anything that, that would prejudice you in this, in this instance, so I would say fine, and I think you have a right to do that, and I don't think you have to ask our permission to do that. So Paul, Paul, do you want to be heard at this time on the request for-
Yeah, they're welcome and entitled to withdraw their, their application for a variance, and, but, that eventually, they have to get a building permit, and I see no way that we could ever issue a building permit for this project under any, you know, the Attorney Para's brought up the Dover, Dover case, or Dover finding, provision, excuse me, that says that it does not give them any relief from the setbacks and all. So I never see a building permit being issued for this, so that giving an extension on this is not, is only prolonging the no answer. I don't see any way that we would ever issue a variance for this property to have it built, you know, the lot just is not big enough, does not meet any of the, does not meet any of the, you know, requirements to have a house built on it, regardless of size, regardless of use. So, I mean, it's certainly their prerogative to proceed whichever way they want, but I just don't see this as ever happening, so that's where I stand on it.
Jake, would you like to be heard on the continuance issue?
I think I would just echo everybody else, I wouldn't agree to a, I don't think a continuance would make sense for anybody, but they're certainly entitled to withdraw the, the appeal.
Yeah, okay, so I think Attorney Para, we're not inclined to allow any, any further continuance, and we've already covered the withdrawal issue, I think you have a right to do that. So anytime before we vote, you're certainly welcome to withdraw that, that aspect of your application process. All right, so-
Excuse me, Rick, can I have a question?
Yes.
And this question would be to Attorney Para, is he just talking about pulling back the appeals application, the, the appeal application, not the applica, you know, which one is he talking about pulling, or is it all three?
Well, I could speak to that, but I'll let Attorney Para respond.
I'm sorry, I'm frozen momentarily there, I think, given the comments that have been made, it's probably just best for the board to proceed on all of the applications and render its decision.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Attorney Para. All right, so at this time, do I, do I have a motion to close off the public portion of this hearing and proceed to board discussion?
Make the motion, Rick.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, so, all right, we're going to close off the public discussion, all right, so we've already had quite a bit of discussion, Paul, we know, you know, several of the board members have already spoken, kind of generally, why don't we discuss these one at a time? So we just got through talking, I spent some time talking about the appeal of the decision of a building inspector, I'll just, just give you my two cents on this, I don't think it's particularly applicable, I, I think that if it, under different circumstances, I mean, a continuance might make sense, but maybe not in this situation, so I, I really, I think this is a special permit issue under Section 13 of the bylaw, and so- of the bylaw, and so, um, my recommendation is, is that, is that we vote no on this appeal of the, of the decision of a building inspector. So would any other, oh, well, I'll just go down the line. Now, Chris, would you like to be heard on that, that issue? Appeal of the decision of the building?
I guess, I'm just, I'm just confused, 'cause I, I thought Dave George said that there was no application filed, but this, this Board of Appeals says the, the, the building inspector denied it. So how can you have a denial if he never, never asked for anything or never formally asked for it? I'm confused here, what, what's going on?
Well, Dave, Dave, since you're, Dave, since you're actually, actually here, rather than me paraphrase what you said, do you want to address that directly?
I, sure, um, I will, let me find the applicant, I'll point to the application that the board has. You'll see that there's a letter, undated from the Building Commissioner, to James Nacasa. That's the correspondence that I was referring to, and this is where the, the advice that whatever they wanted to do to reconstruct the structure, the single family dwelling, would require zoning board approval. So this is what is being appealed. Since the applicant applied for an appeal of the building decision or determination, it's, it, it should be voted no because it's not a valid course of action. So no, uh, so Chris, there was no building permit. What, what's in play is this letter that's in all three of the applications. That's what they're appealing, I believe.
Okay, but if that's just based on that, on this letter, then why, why was this appeal even granted to the applicant?
There is no appeal been granted.
Then why did, why did the town allow that, this, this appeal even to be recognized in what, you know, like this one of these three should have never even been part of the discussion?
I can answer that, I can answer to that. So our advice, once again, was that based upon our understanding of a single family dwelling being in play, that we recommended variances from area and frontage. Having said that, you cannot refuse to accept, the town clerk cannot refuse to accept applications that the applicant brings against the advice of town staff. So the applicant brought these other two applications on their own, they were not advised to do so, but how, having submitted those to the town clerk, you cannot refuse to accept those applications in, so therefore the board must deal with these things. So we advised one way, they did these other things on their own initiative, and they applied to the town clerk. So once again, you can't refuse an application for a hearing for a special permit, variance for administrative appeal. So they are entitled to make the filing, and once they make the filing, then unfortunately the board has to then, you know, has to then go and deal with what they have submitted.
Okay.
That answers your question? Does that answer your question, Chris?
Oh, no, it doesn't, because you're referencing the other two applications, but I'm not talking about the other two. I'm just talking about the one that states appeal of decision of the building inspector.
So what is your, what is your question again?
You said earlier that you don't think we should even be, that this is even valid because they never filed for a building permit.
That's correct.
So, you know, which came first here, right? So my question is, if that's the case, if you have to file for a building permit and get shot down by the inspector, why was this even granted? This appeal?
Nothing's been granted. If, the board hasn't taken action on this, so the appeal hasn't been granted or not. This is an item.
What I'm saying, you've allowed this appeal to come in based on nobody having a problem with anything.
We haven't allowed the appeal to come in. The applicant filed it on their own initiative to the town clerk, and it cannot be refused. Rick, I don't know if you can maybe weigh in on what the role of a clerk is with respect to having to take in applications? You can't refuse them.
Yeah, David, I mean, thank you, David. Right, Chris, my, my, my position on here, on this, this whole thing, is, is that an application for a variance is, is not appropriate. It, it is a special permit issue, and David is, is just saying that there, there was a request for information to the building inspector. The building inspector did, did not, I mean, he gave his opinion, but it wasn't really a formal denial. And so, um, David had said that if you, if you boil it down, there's no application or denial from the building inspector, so why is the applicant filing this thing that says appeal of the decision of a building inspector? And, and so, and then David went on to say that the applicant can file anything they want. I'm saying, I don't think they should have filed it. I don't, I don't see the, I don't see the appropriateness of it. So I'm basically saying, trying to say exactly what David just said, that, that, uh, this is not something that I think should be before the board, but because they file it, we have to discuss it, we have to vote on it. Does that, does that help at all?
Yeah, that's fine. I just assumed that you had to have the building permit denied to get this, you know, um, allowed to be heard, that's all. Okay, thank you.
Right, Bob?
That was, that was interesting. I didn't know that either, so that's good. Um, there's more clarity there. But yeah, I agree with you, Rick. I think it comes down to the special permit application, and, and I, again, I can't get past that with the timing of all that, so, um, you know, I'm just not in favor of moving forward with it.
Okay, thank you. Um, Paul? On, on this issue? Paul?
Yep, trying to get the microphone muted. My, my stance hasn't changed.
Okay.
Uh, just don't see any relief, um, I haven't seen anything that backs up relief, um, from anything on any of these permits, so.
Okay. All right, thanks, thanks a lot, Paul. Um, Jake?
I don't have any comment.
Okay, okay, so, um, we, we're gonna, let, let's, uh, let's, I want to entertain a motion to put this particular, um, appeal of a decision of a building inspector to a vote. Do, do I?
Okay, Rick, can we, can we make a single motion to deny all, all three per, those three applications, correct?
I, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure if I feel comfortable with that. I, in my, my mind, it just makes more sense to do them individually.
Okay, so do you want to just, uh, pick one, pick them in an order and go one at a time?
Well, I, I, we've been, yeah, we've been discussing this app, appeal of the decision of a building inspector. I, I, I'm suggesting that it, that it probably shouldn't have been brought. I'm not criticizing the applicant. They, they've done a nice job in presenting their case, but, um, I don't, I don't think it's particularly applicable in this situation, so I, I am suggesting that we vote, vote no on this.
Okay.
But I, I'm suggesting that it, that procedurally, I feel more comfortable voting on them one at a time.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, um, vote on, close discussion and vote on the application for variance on, based, uh, based on the building inspector.
Thank you.
Appeal, not the variance.
The appeal.
Appeal of a decision of a building inspector, yeah, okay. All right, second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we'll put this to a vote. This, this is on a vote, uh, as to whether to grant relief for the appeal of a decision of a building inspector. All in favor? All opposed?
All right.
No, okay? So, all right, so it's unanimous?
Rick, just a point of order, um, call out, you may want to note the voting members on the, on these?
Yeah, um, the, the voting members, I, I thought I did that, but I'll reiterate that, it's myself, Chris, and Bob.
Hold on, Rick, did we just vote on that actual thing, or did we vote to make the motion to vote on that? I'm so friggin' confused right now.
I am sorry for the confusion.
I just, I just voted yes, so either I just voted yes to vote on this, or I voted it was to approve the, the, the appeal.
I'm just gonna stay on mute.
If I, if I misled anybody or confused anybody, I apologize. In, in my mind, we just voted on that application. If you voted, if you voted yes, do you, I'm gonna allow you to change your vote if you would like, otherwise, the, the.
It's, it doesn't matter that, it's a.
Doesn't matter.
No, it's a two-thirds vote, David.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so that's.
Do you want to stay with the yes?
No, that, that, it's, it's fine, just, just.
Mr. Chairman, um, I don't want to interfere with your deliberations. My clients have a, have another meeting, no disrespect intended, but they, they will be leaving. Um, I, I will stay on.
Well, that's perfectly fine, that's, that's perfectly fine. Thank you for mentioning that.
And by the way, I heard a unanimous vote in favor of the application.
Okay, all right, so I, I heard, it's hard to say with these, um, remotes, but it looks like we got a no, no, and a yes, unless Chris wants to change his vote. Okay.
I, I'll just change it to a, to a nay, okay? Just.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, great.
That was my turn.
All right, all right, so the, the next one, I, is the application for variance. Again, I, I think that this is, this is a special permit request appropriately, and of, of course, the applicant did file an, a, an application for a special permit, and we'll, we'll get to that next. So, to my way of thinking, uh, unless the, unless the spec, well, all right, let me back up. If the applicant, as a right, can, you know, is able to reconstruct that house exactly as it was, be- before it was condemned, before it was torn down, then there, there might be some merit to this application for a variance, because they would, they would be able to do it for, as a, as a matter of right. They would all, they would only need a special permit if they wanted to increase the footprint, which of course they do. So in one sense, the, this application is, is moot because, um, they don't want to put it up as it was. So I'll go, I'll go on record as saying that my opinion is that the, the applicant did not, did not, well, they, they, they don't, they don't want to build it as it was, so it's a moot issue, so I, I'm going to vote no on this. So is, is, would anyone else like to be heard? Chris, do you want to be heard on that, that issue?
Yes, um, just for, I don't agree, and I just want to say something, Rick, your comment about the structure having to be the same exact size, um, is, I've built a lot of property where they literally leave one, two-foot wall up of an existing structure, and they basically rebuild to any other dimension that they deem fit, and that is legal by the Mass Building Code as far as, that's done all the time. That's kind of a common use before the property. So as far as that, I just, I just kind of wanted to discuss that with you, just let you know that, that personally, I don't agree with that point of view as far as it would have to be the same footprint. I believe what they've shown here on the site plan meets all the, you know, guidelines. They've got the setbacks and frontages and everything, and the property's within, within all the rules to build if the, if the lot was a, you know, buildable lot, which is the issue, okay? So again, I think it was talked about earlier, it's the use matter, I think Jacob pointed that, not so much, you know, um, the size and things. So I do agree with you, a variance here is really not, um, not, not the issue, and I'm not in favor of a variance on this as well, but in a different manner, thank you.
All right, so, so I just want to, want to make another comment, so, you know, wh- where I see this, I, I, I don't, some other board members have mentioned that it, it's a question of, of whether the time limit was met, and my, the clock in my mind goes from the date of con, of the condemning of the, of the property, not, not the, I'm raising of it. So they, I, I don't think they have a right to do this, of, you know, when I write the decision, um, you know, I'll, I'll illuminate that, but as far, assuming that they had a right to rebuild, um, you know, there, there might be some, something that we would have to visit, but I don't really see it as we're talking about it. So I, I just don't see the applicability of the application for variance, so I'm, I'm going to vote, well, I'm inclined to vote no on that. So, um, Chris, you've spoken a little bit, you, you want to talk more about that, or you want to?
No, I, 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 I agree, I don't think the variance here really is, is, you know, it's a matter of use issue, and that would fall like a special permit. I don't think the variance here is applicable, and I'm not inclined to vote in favor, I mean, I'm, I'm inclined to vote not in favor of this right now, that's.
Okay, uh, Bob?
Can I make a motion then to, uh, move the, the application for variance to a vote?
Yeah, but I, absolutely, but, but I, I just want to make sure that, um, you know, you and Jake have to say, so I've got your, your response. Can we, I just want to hear from Jake briefly before we vote on, on that?
I have no comment, thank you.
Okay, all right, so, so you want to make a motion?
It's Tamika, if I may. If it makes it a little bit less confusing, you don't have to make a motion to put it to a vote. You can simply just make the motion for what the vote is, but it would only be made and seconded by two of the three people that are voting members. So I think we might be adding an extra step, and that might be what had confused Chris earlier, so it's completely up to if you still want to do it that way, um, but it's not necessary if you choose not to.
Okay, um.
Then I remove, I withdraw my motion.
Okay, well, I, I don't want to get into a big discussion about it. Um, we, we've always done it that way. You know, whether it's technically required or not, that, that's been our practice. So you can withdraw your.
I'll keep up with you guys, don't worry. Thanks, Tamika, for looking out for me. You're always, always looking out for me, but I'll, I'll hang on to Bob's coattails here and, uh, he, now, I'll be all right. Thank you.
All right, so, um, without stepping on anybody's toes, why, why, why don't we finish using the, the procedures that we've been doing? So why do we, why don't we vote on a motion to close, close the board discussion and put, put this to a vote?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, so, I'll, we're, we're gonna vote on the application for variance. So all in favor? All opposed?
All right.
All, all right, so there's, all right, so that's, that's voted down. All right, so the, the next one is the application for special permit. As I mentioned a minute ago, I, I don't, I don't think that, um, this application fits into either thirteen section two or thirteen section five. I, it's a non-conforming structure, I, I, I'm gonna stick, stick to my guns on that, and I, I think the two-year time limit was, was not adhered to, and, you know, we, we have, um, as, as far as, I, I don't even think we, we need to go beyond that, because if we, if we did find that the two-year time limit was met and we, and we, we were considering voting favorably on this, we would then have to have a discussion about, you know, wh- whether this is good for the town and good for the neighbors and all that kind of thing. I don't even think we need to get there. So, um, where, where I, I don't think that the two-year window requirement has been met under, uh, section thirteen subsection five, uh, I'm inclined to vote unfavorably on the application for a special permit. Chris, comment on that, please?
Um, no comment at this time.
Okay, um, Bob?
I'm in agreement with, with you, Rick.
Okay, Paul?
I'm in agreement with you, Rick.
All right, Jake?
I'm in agreement, no comment.
All right, so, um, we'll have a further discussion about my, about the procedures, but, um, for now, why don't I entertain a motion to close board discussion and put this to a vote?
To a vote. Again.
Okay, so we'll put this to a vote. This is the application for special permit. All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
No? Okay. All right, so am I, am I correct in hearing that it's, it's uni- unanimous no on this?
Correct, correct.
All right, so this is voted down. Uh, you'll, you'll have, you'll have my decision, well, you'll have the board decision. I will take responsibility for drafting, drafting it. Uh, Attorney Para, I, I thank you for, for all the effort you've put into this, um, all the arguments that you made, and, um, we, we express, we, I want to express, you know, from, from my perspective, with professionalism and courtesy towards the board. So a- at this time, um, I, I think we're, we're ready to, we're ready to close this aspect of the meeting.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate the comments. I'll take, uh, my singed hair and go downstairs and, uh, have a little dinner and maybe a glass of wine and, uh, call it a day.
Thank you very much, Attorney Para.
Thank you, good luck. Thank you, good luck.
Okay, so I, I don't think we have anything more to discuss. Um, I, I will, Tamika, this is, this is one matter that I don't think you want to take a shot at drafting?
No, I'm totally fine with that.
All right, so I'll, I'll, I'll draft this and I will circulate it to the board, board members, uh, the voting board members, as we all know, it's, it's Chris and Bob. So, at, at this time, I don't think there's, there are any other matters that we need to discuss. So, um, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and David, thank you very much for your, your input, you were very helpful to the board, we really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, have a good night, folks.